We're gathering for the special call city commission meeting on March 6, 2023. When we have the invitation, how do we all agree please?
We thank you once again for this opportunity to come together. We thank you. How good you have been all day long. Again, one more time, and I say thank you. Pray God that you will guide, decision, guidance, direction, give us what we need to do, God, to move this city forward. Pray God that you will bless every participant today, that you will be done in this place. Ain't nobody God but you. We look to you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Mr. Griffin, could you lead the question with your force?
Agents to the bottom of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fair roll call.
Certainly, thank you. Commissioner Kami McCaskill here, Commissioner Will Jones, Commissioner Lucas Mooreham, Commissioner Justin Campbell, and Madam Mayor Kray.
President.
All present in account or we do have a form.
Thank you. Could you also read the special form meeting notice?
Certainly. To Commissioners Kami McCaskill, Will Jones, Lucas Mooreham, and Justin Campbell, you hereby notified that a special call meeting of the Platte City Commission is scheduled for March 6, 2023 at 4:30 at City Hall 201 North Second Street, Platte, Florida, 32177. The purpose of the meeting is to select the city manager. Please govern yourselves accordingly. Signed, Roberta N. Kray, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the floor to public comments. We have one five, Ms. Kitchens.
A lead recognition standing seven South Wells Street, Platte, Florida, former city manager, former member of two different city management search committees and citizens. You've been told that you have to have a city manager by 8/31 in October, so you don't. When Mike Stenmore was fired, City Clerk Vettin Rivers filled in for Ryan Lusk. Then the city hired Mr. Farner as new city manager. The city was found to have a city manager for a year or more and function with no power. Then according to his warrant comment, to make sure their office first moved, the city clerk would serve as an assistant to the city manager and work the table until he can get a new city manager. However, you have now done an assistant city manager. By definition, an assistant fit in when the person he's filling in for can't do the job or a doubt. If he can't fill in or is not willing to fill in, then you need to get a different assistant manager. The point is, you don't have to feel like you're being pressured that you want these three candidates and looking at their background, which you all may or may not know about, which I will not want to detail about. You don't need to think any of it. The lead, you need to track down all three of them, instruct the city manager to get with the lead cities and bring out any one of the next city manager candidates, or you will choose one. It doesn't matter if it takes a year. All you need, you need to make the right choice and not rush or pressure away. Just say no to these three today and start over knowing that the city will continue to run well with the new city manager and we find the one that the majority of you think is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? They know where to close the public comments and you'll launch a election of city managers.
Madam, I think Mr. Sheffield wants to speak.
Yeah, I don't see this one. Okay, going on the collection of city manager, we're first having that meeting. And if we, because it's kind of a practice, do we want to go through each candidate, discuss briefly and make a decision one way or the other on each candidate? Or how do we want to proceed? Ms. Jones, would you like to come up? Please? We'll give a short thought.
On how we would do a whole other city. If a decision had been made and asked me, I'm, you all, I would be dead if I got this bet. What did rating move before? Would you thought of a candidate making a decision and ask whether you want to choose one or deny all?
Okay. That said, Commissioner Campbell?
I have nothing to say right now.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
The format, his name is John.
That's, I think, the suggestion.
As I said before, I think this process need to be something that is going to be a policy or a seed going forward. This board previously, then by us over now, what if I city manager, now if they know we have policy in place, we're going to get into in how this process goes. Suggestions at this point? It should be, I think it should be a process that we already know each one of us, however you express it, or see it in writing, so that it would be a transparent process that no one would ever be able to come up and say, I wasn't treated fairly. There are some things that have come up. Particularly on, I will stop right there. And that's our process or procedure that we all know and go familiar with. So we know what we're doing, are we going to create? Are we going to have a discussion before? And I think that that direction does not carry nothing here.
Okay, thank you. And there is information that, is that public information, Ms. Thomas, that can be brought to light here at this meeting about each candidate that we have concerns about? If we do, in fact?
Are you referring to the background information that?
Yes, please, yeah.
Yes, and each of the candidates, what happened, the provisions for the information that they gathered.
I would wait to pass another day, yeah.
Yeah.
I understand it was pretty good. Interviewed prior to the candidates coming before us. I didn't receive any scoring from that matrix at all. As well, I don't know if anybody else did. I just was presenting with three or seven candidates, but I don't know if they were irrelevant or not. I mean, you can tell me that. What were they scored on?
We did not score any of the candidates. The purpose of us looking into the seven candidates was just to determine if what was on paper would qualify them or not to bring them before you all. So we didn't do any scoring, we didn't rank, we didn't do anything. Just ask questions, find out if they were able to answer the questions, adds it to the change to the information they have on their resume. And if that was in line, we wanted before you all to draw the score.
Very much. If I can elaborate, we did not exclude it. If they, if we did not have a reason, if the group did not believe we had a reason to disqualify a candidate, then we voted the candidate on for your consideration because it was indicated that you wished to make the choice as compared to there being any sort of a ranking as had been done in the past by any form of panel. So every, we did not exclude anyone who applied who came in before the deadline.
Commissioner Campbell? Just a couple of questions. I thought that we came to a consensus at the last meeting that we were going to use the matrix, the interview process, and staff input if we so decided, and that we were going to move forward with the decision. Am I right?
I'm, Madam, it's fine, thank you.
If? Am I right? I mean, I've heard from the mayor, Madam Mayor. Thank you for my fellow commissioners.
I mean, that's what was established when we accepted that, absolutely, that's what we agreed that we would use that process.
All right. Like Commissioner Campbell advised, that he was not going to use that matrix. And I don't know if you meant just then, or were you going to come up, just to clarify, just then or later.
And then I thought Commissioner Campbell said that he would want to implement it. And Commissioner Jones said we could use that input, how effort the staff wanted to reach out to him, that makes sure that we each say what we were and what we wanted to use. However, however, that was the protocol or the guideline that we were going to use. Am I right? To my fellow commissioners?
Again, I understand that is what we discussed.
Okay. So now, Madam Mayor, are you ready for my input?
I am, I'm ready to. So you mean that's what I thought we could do and ask for inputs on each candidate following those guidelines, if you chose to follow those steps in that guideline, and then everybody chose to follow all those steps, but yes.
Right now, you have to look at my hand.
And then before that candidate, I choose to believe that candidate. Commissioner Mooreham?
I don't accept. Well, I'm not going to move forward with that candidate as well.
Commissioner Jones?
This is a big candidate?
We're talking about Mr. Akimi right now.
We're going for all of the candidates.
We're just going through each one, so we.
Nobody to have that there, I can't even.
I said that at the start, I'm sorry it's become so confusing, but anyway, yes, we're going to go through each three candidates and either the one with who is the city of being on the opinion, if you're answered.
Okay, number one?
Yes.
Mr. Kimi, I vote no.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
And I vote no, it's fair. Moving on to Mr. McConnell, Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Mooreham?
No.
Commissioner McCaskill?
No.
Okay, and then moving on to Mr. Bill. Commissioner Campbell?
Based on the three candidates, yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Bill? Candidates that have been presented, I vote yes.
Commissioner Mooreham?
No.
Commissioner McCaskill?
No.
I also vote no. So at this point, the majority has voted in a decision that all three candidates are not even on choosing and I would say we're moving on to the next round of advertising and off the other position. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So we have tried to avoid, I don't know if we tried to avoid, but based upon our initial response to our advertisement, we did not retain a talent finding agency. We did put out an RFP, and we do have to respond with that RFP for talent finding agencies. Some people call them headhunters, regardless of what you want to call them. My question to you is, do you wish us at this point to to look at one of those two talent finding agencies to see if we select one of them to move forward with the search? You know, we talked about the cost earlier. And I think the two agencies had differing cost factors, but they, you know, there is a cost involved in that, in that search process.
Go ahead, Commissioner Campbell. Can we wait until Thursday to the best that we can, please, come and have a conversation with you?
Oh, it's up to you entirely, yeah.
I think that's okay.
Actually, I have just moving forward. And I'll say this, and I'm in total agreement with Commissioner Jones with making sure that when we move forward, and I thought that this was the conversation that we will be having tonight, if we were moving forward or if we not moving forward, but coming up with how we want this process to look, coming up with how, what are we looking for within the city manager? I believe, again, that was the conversation that we're supposed to be having today. Being that we did not go with the three recommended candidates, which, I mean, it is what it is. What are we going to do for, so that we're not put back in the same position that we are in now? What are we looking for? How is the process going to look aside of? Because if you put out an RFP and we haven't told you what it is that we're looking for, putting out an RFP for a headhunter is counterproductive. Because we may have some things that we're looking for that the headhunter may not be as versed on. So just going back to what Commissioner Jones said, being that we are at square one, let's make this thing work out, and let's build it out so that we know what we're getting, we know what we're doing.
Commissioner Jones, will you put on the match?
Commissioner Campbell, just so you hear. My thoughts and we are policymakers. We're decision makers. We should be able to make decisions and be able to stand on and reasons why or why not. Think that, you know, some of the stuff that we have been told and presented, I said at the last meeting, everybody had it yesterday, more scrutinize people for allegations or some comments that someone made without really doing thorough fact finding. I was, we were told by the attorney that it was case law, that we could not look up individuals and their background during the process. I had not yet received case law. I haven't seen it asked for, I haven't seen that. But there's a recent, as the day I received email with background, when I feel, you know, before anybody is presented to us, we should have that already. Okay, so thank you for doing the process a little better. I would like to see the process ironed out. I would like to see the process in paper, what we're doing and how we're doing. I would also like to know the type of candidate that we're looking for to lead us to take into daily operations. I understand, I understand. We together need to have, whether it's open workshop, whatever, whatever that does not violate sunshine to get together to have some dialogue on what it is to move the city forward. These sidebar meetings with folk, they are, I can still productive. I didn't happen to have one, just like anyone else. If I'm applying for a job, I'm putting all my qualifications out, all my experiences, just like anyone else, all of us here, in hope that we are considered based upon our knowledge, skills, and abilities. Okay, we have made hires, just want to remind everybody in here, we made hires within the city government, not we, because I haven't had this opportunity to select someone at this capacity yet. But in this organization, that wasn't quite qualified for jobs or positions, but they were given opportunities. I've never seen anybody or heard of it here that we went on things that have been planted rather than social media or otherwise against people. Okay, from a HR perspective, you go with facts. There's education, experience, and the fit. Now, if we could all articulate that to what we really and quantitatively, that's something I can buy. I can't even buy someone's opinion on someone else. And if we can't do our own fact finding, it's almost like our hands are tied. So going forward, I would like to see, whatever case law it is, that we cannot do our own fact finding or information inquiry. Also, also, Madam, also, I would like a matrix when we're we're talking about changing lives in the leadership of this community. I would like to make sure certain that we're being consistent when we're talking about bringing people in. And it's a scoring matrix that's consistent, and I like those interview question that would basically talk about how would you deal with a commission man? Well, city manager is not commission man, Mark. I think it's the other way around. So we ask questions that really is not pertinent to their job and the ability to do their job and lead others. So we need to really sit down and we're going to buy into it. We need to own the process. Own the process, make the trust, and deliver the decision that we made. I'm not partial to any of these. I don't know them personally. But I just feel a fair process need to be created going forward. And those mirror campaigns, and I'm not saying nobody did a mirror campaign, but I'm saying let's make certain that we're being fair in the process. I don't know if any of you guys have been in the process where you wasn't a favor because of somebody just didn't like you. But I know of those kind of experiences. I will make sure that I'll be a part of.
Thank you, Commissioner McCaskill, another one. Okay, one of this time.
Commissioner, what I advise is that the case law states that you cannot hold people in background them upon receipt of their resume and application and make the decision based on that background investigation, not to bring them in and to interview them. I would let them be sent to you at least. I did not, you know, I'm hearing your requests for it. I can send you that as soon as we, in this meeting this afternoon. And as far as those questions that you said in 29 that you, you asked for a situational question, and that is what we provided. The first that the question that was provided along with the matrix was comprised of both all of the groups, HR, legal, we came up with those questions. We have a matrix and some points assigned based on the information provided by the candidates. Then there were questions that were added to that, that were not a part of that matrix, that were staff had no input on or trying to give you with the commission assistance in grading those questions or those responses. Okay, so that's where we are. But I can give you that case law as soon as we can.
Thank you.
I'll let that.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. I want to make sure, and I don't want to make any assumptions. So I ask any questions about what was just said, but I just want to clarify. I did not make my decision based on any scrutiny of anyone. I want to make sure, and I want to add the question to legal, that any conversations that I have with staff, community members, would that be considered sidebar or illegal? I just want to make sure that this theory question, because I just want to make sure that I did not violate the law when I did that. Any conversation that you have with staff is obviously protected. You can speak to staff. And community members, and community members, as long as they are not trying to sway you or give you in some kind of renumeration for a vote either way, then that's not being given. That I did well. So I wanted to make sure of that. And then as you have a question, because we've seen a bunch of you previous city managers, and if I'm not mistaken, we use a matrix. Am I? Can you answer that for me, city manager, huh?
So I know that there were the matrix used, that is one of your processes. I can't tell you each process, but I know that at least in one of your processes, you did use a matrix or a point total, I guess if that's what you're calling a matrix. There was also, I think, a matrix used in one of the processes by a committee that you appointed to qualify candidates.
Yes.
So in my, my recollection is that what we are calling a matrix or a tabulation, a table, was in fact used at one, in at least one of the processes before.
So is it similar to the one that we have before us now, that we just used in a previous interview process? The one that we have before us now, the one that we just used in a previous interview process, was it similar to the one that we used to hire a city manager?
I can't say that. I think this brought, this matrix was comprised by Ms. Jones. I don't, I don't, I think, I think
Go ahead.
No, the ones before, to be honest with you, I don't know how they were formulated then.
We used it, the matrices that we used before, did they have like a scoring method?
Yes, it's very similar to what you all provided. It's similar.
Yeah.
It's good, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't weigh off and we weren't using a process that was unfair or something that was openly, you know, us, that it was something similar. And these are the questions that I need to know, because I do want to make sure that I'm fair or being somewhat similar there. Okay?
And just a point of information, Commissioner, when the fire chief was selected, we had a committee, we had a matrix, we had an interview, we scored, and we made that.
But I would also make sure that we put out there, even though there was a matrix, we as the commission had the ability to bring someone that was a part of the process, the interview process, that did not make it, we had the ability to bring them up. So there, if we put everything out there, let's make sure that we, which you very clearly clarified, what we as a commission had the ability to bring someone that was not recommended based on the matrix that was provided.
Oh, I remember that one.
We all think it.
So I just put my two cents in, I have added, yeah, I just throw my in. But based on the information, the background that I had, information that I had, along with what staff provided, I wasn't willing to move forward with any of the candidates based on the information I couldn't consciously move forward with that. But anyways, in the past, we've had a combination of interviews where we had staff involved and panelists involved, as well as we've used certain firms, different things of that nature. So I guess going forward, you know, same thing, while we can get maybe a certain firm to do that portion of it, and when we use that certain firm, we did put in what we were actually looking for. I think that's what was used maybe this time as well, but we just used that from then we use the same kind of process in terms of what we're looking for in the candidate.
Mister, we had a job description on city manager. It's not that much of, of, of a, I guess, unique description. City managers are used throughout the country. That was the basis of the applications. As far as what was referenced as internet searches or social media, the advice that the city attorney gave early on was, prior to the time we had a release from the candidate, we were not to go in depth in attempting to perform any research on the candidate. That's my knowledge. That advice was followed. Now, if the commission wants to offer an opinion that you don't want staff involved at all, that's fine. If you don't want anyone to inquire of previous employers of the candidates, that's fine. You can just take, take what you get and not ask previous employers about their experience with that particular individual. If that is what you're dicting it.
No, that's not my point at all. What I was saying is that we can use a combination of both. But we would work with the, the search firm, and we, and the commission can do their due diligence, our due diligence, and well, and staff, so that we can make sure that we are getting the candidate that would represent the city like, like they should, and the role that they'll be coming to play. That's, that's what, that's my point.
Commissioner McCaskill?
So when we started this process, we gave staff directions of what we wanted, am I right? While we're working the roll down, we've done this several times before, am I right?
But we've done it several different methods. We have not had the same way. The last time, the first time, well, one of the times, like I said, we had a full committee. They brought back a recommendation to us. We went from that recommendation. Then the other time was we did kind of what we did this time, and we did it ourselves. So I And we did it ourselves. So I. The reason that we're at this fork in the road, if you ask me, is because I don't wanna be back in this position. Couple of months from now, have the same discussion, when we can have this discussion tonight, today, clearly lay it out. Of the way that we desire the process to be, because again, that's what this meeting was for. We've heard all of our. Individual um, individual. Language or whatever we've heard with each other has about this process. So now. What can we do to bring it all together and move forward as a cohesive unit while we're at that fork? So now we're trying to move from the fork to the actual panel. So we can get a handle of what, what it is that we really want to. Want this process to look. And I think now that we are back at square one. This gives us the opportunity to make this process, because I think the recommendation. And again, I don't put words in anyone's mouth, but Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Warren, this is something that we are going to follow. For years to come. So we want to make sure that at this point, it's very much there. That we have a good structure, and if it needs to have some change, it can be changed based on the position. But overall, we have a metric, we have something that we can go by. That is applicable not only to the city manager, because we have the attorney coming up, and finance, and all of those things. But we want something that could be utilized, not just for this time, but in the years to come until the commissioner desires a payment.
I can agree with all of that as well, and I think this was.
I'm sorry, you are down here. I believe Commissioner, and I'm quite sure all of us do. But if we're to have one of those candidates tonight, we have to be having this conversation.
I would not hire any one of those candidates.
Hire those, one of those candidates.
The conversation has already been had. The conversation has already been, the request has already been made. He made it several times before, so. But it was left, it was left to at this meeting, in whatever this direction we decided to go. So now that we went in that direction, let's bring up everything.
Um I agree, and so I think a policy would be a good thing to have, and a process would be good to outline. Um I, I also think that to be fair and clear, the fact finding was what um Mr. Holmes and Ms. Thomas did. It wasn't internet innuendo and social media questionable. Kind of information with that finding that I think, again, it couldn't happen till we had that release. From those candidates at the second round of interviews, and from that, that gave us the additional information to make my decision, I hope. But I think we do have to have that process. The question is now, do we wait, do we make those decisions right now, do we wait till Thursday evening? Um because of the question of a headhunter, I mean a search company rather, and whether we want to lay out exactly beyond. The job description where we wanna go.
Listen, listen, time, if you, you start with, when you think, uh better begin your meeting. Let's talk about what we need to talk about, in that way, it's gonna be a different meeting for what's on the agenda. So this kind of process is going to be, then we need to take care of it. Uh and we, we, I mean. The media is here, and I'm just, I'm just trying to be cautious and not say anything that. I'm just gonna say the facts. We were, we were. When I say we, I spoke to people prior to last week. And, and even the recommendations were these two guys were, well, these three guys were, hey, they're jam up. They have a qualification, they've done this. This is who was balled it up. It could have been clearly said and done, you know? From Ms. Jones, assistant city manager, city manager, different, you know? They look good on paper. And this, we, I would very easily, so we, we, we're not gonna be breaking forth to the guys. I, I would like to see that kind of confidence in staff to say. If, oh, but, but I'm back up because I'm saying unfairly. If we had from the start said what we are looking for in city managers. What they must have, here are the must haves for you to break them for. You understand what I'm talking about, Ms. Jones? Or, you understand? That, that makes sense, city manager?
Not really.
Okay, so for example, the next city manager must have at least two years' experience on the job as a city manager.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Are you gonna verify that or are you just gonna accept what's on the resume?
You're gonna verify, okay. That's why, that's why it's important to get a search form firm, because we're having somebody who actually. Gonna put a pain to do that. If they don't do it, then that's gonna be some repercussions. And if you can't tell me, then go ahead and talk to us, because that's what I want us. Um city attorney, on what someone can say about an ex-employer. That's where all of us had that protection. So this could be hearsay, we don't know.
Uh hearsay from the HR director of that city.
Absolutely.
Could be.
Because, because now you know the fact that the HR director is saying, hey, listen. I'm gonna do this off the record. Saying, and I'm just saying, it's future records going forward, so we need to talk about it, have it out of here. If someone was turned, well, a termination would be nice. They ain't gonna give you that, because they can't. I know that for a fact.
Who would know that for a fact that if they release this sign by the advocate and it's provided to the HR director in the other city, they can provide you information about why that.
Right, that's what I said. They would not. And if the HR already tells you something off sidebar, that's. This. These pay them in track. So going back, I think that uh what spending money for a. A headhunter, employment, um headhunter would be worth it. Because like Ms. Kelsey said, how we did here, we, we were to make a decision today, we would have had candidates that had. Very far background qualification that we're gonna hopefully establish going forward, of what we want in a city manager. And also, I, I try, I make a recommendation that we have a head on, look for city manager, city attorney. As well as finance director, all of those positions are open, and we need to just have, have a look for all of them. You know, uh it's almost like here, it's almost like, we're. We're doing a succession plan after the fact, cuz we can plug in who we want in these positions, yeah. Even us. So let's kind of like take that stuff out of this equation where. Again, it's gonna be a fair process, transparent to all, and we won't have to have a guess. I mean, anything that. That's going background, that people really have a lot of data to lose, if, if they had number one, right? Anything except get it, say it, they're in.
There's um just also, there is a call for each position, correct, for the search company. And we don't have those numbers, do we? Uh, if anybody has them, please, thank you.
Wait a minute, I think you're gonna go again. I think you're paying out, paying with it.
Well, I'm just saying, I think we should know those numbers as we discuss it, that's all. I'm not saying you truly should not yet. I want to know those numbers. Um, may I speak, please? I would comment this close. I feel like this is on this specifically. Y'all need to know some of them. Okay, please, please, kitchens, come on.
At least we're kitchen ten twenty-seven, child health, state of Florida. If you help with the lead of cities first. The air conditioning ladder is either free or very costly effective. The one that the city market previously due to Lincoln Cities. Was a retired city manager who knew all the qualifications that a city manager needs. He brought in good, good venue of city candidates from the then-commissioned look at, or Mr. Warren may have been on the commission at that time, I'm not sure. But that worked very well, it was very costly effective, so don't rule out having the lead of cities bring somebody in. The other thing, I think it was Mrs. Campbell, or Mrs. Jones, suggested a workshop. On visiting all of the policy on choosing the city manager, that's not a bad idea. I would also question the city attorney, that this meeting was a spatial call meeting advertised only. The purpose of the meeting is for the interview of city manager candidates and selection of a city manager. I am a little bit confused in how you all discussed policy, when it was not advertised as a public meeting, all the boss. Now, if it's okay for the city attorney, it's okay with me, but I think you need to put this on the agenda for the next city commission meeting. If you can't get it this Thursday, then the next Thursday, or have another spatial call meeting. But I would suggest that you use the Campbell, Mrs. Jones, I forgot which one's better, have a workshop, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so here we are, yeah, square one, as was stated. Um we'll wait for Mr. Campbell to come back with those costs, so we have an idea of how we wanna move forward, why not?
I agree that unless you put on the, as an emergency item right now, selecting one of those firms would not be appropriate.
Right. Commissioner, look at, okay, earlier, it was okay if we discussed it on Thursday. Just in case you all.
I just think, and, and, and I'll be completely honest. I believe that this is something that should have our complete and ultimate attention. Um especially if we're looking to build policy or moving forward, and we all, we know. Thursdays. I think Mr. Holmes said it best, when we were trying to shorten the length of our meetings. After a certain time, we get restless. That's fine, but I just, I'm not in favor of adding it to the agenda for Thursday.
We can do it. And that's all fine, um but this um agenda did specifically say selection of city manager. Who are hard to stay with that for the screening, I think a workshop is probably the widest idea, I mean, separate person, every commission over. So. Even though workshops tend to be more involved.
We need this work, we need the workshop, this is the, we're running out of time.
Do we wanna take a vote on that and offload, it's kind of waiting, somebody asked this year, if they have a, we've been running, we've got all the steps. Well, we can move forward with scheduling the meeting, also the decision to have a workshop around, um so. Who wants to make a motion? We have a motion for a workshop, time, time certainly be established then, with that executive. Okay, so now to come up with a date in this discussion, before we go into the sale.
So this, so it's me to have the call to name a city manager. Um I don't know city manager Holmes' exit strategy or when he would actually be leaving, I don't know about the kitchen going on. Um this kitchen did make a good point. We have an assistant city manager, um, although we also have had interim city managers in the past. So I, I don't know, is that gonna be needed? I don't know how long we're gonna, um, we, we might get a group that still don't. Meet what we are looking for, um in a timely fashion. I don't know what they're saying, um but. If we have to, do you guys think we will have a main entrance, or um is that?
That's to be discussed.
I think we can discuss.
That's under this, this, the name of city manager, right? Okay, it's the election. But still, I'm, I'm saying.
I think we could really certainly discuss it the workshop possibly, if we want to do that. I think we have to collectively agree on that. But at this point, we, with this meeting uh inspired the agenda, we finished that portion of the agenda, so I think we're talking about a workshop now. And we need a date and time.
Well, also, yeah, cuz I never, I've been invited to the agenda, I would like to say, I have a question. Y'all answer the question, I'll open. Go ahead.
I know she's second, I, I wouldn't need to make. Who made the motion?
The motion was made by Commissioner McCaskill, second by me, if we have the call for.
Right, now we're on the discussion.
We're in discussion right now, and that's what we're trying to, if you want to call for a vote, we can call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? Here we have.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to have a workshop now, at time, I mean, naming time, please. What workshop are we gonna try with this next week?
I'll tell you, any day is gonna be up at five o'clock, um. And we're running late at this at five, but after around, my schedule is a little bit.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday next week is not, not good, I mean, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
What about?
That's right, right?
No, I got, I got a vacation as well as um a meeting. And, and the meeting already paid for, yeah. But Monday, Friday, Monday, Friday are all, you know, all over week or wherever.
Yeah, we're pushing it out again, I guess we have to do, to do, we keep pushing this out. So you're saying Monday?
I don't need to cancel one, I'm paid.
Okay, so you're saying, excuse me, you're saying Monday, the twentieth, November?
We're in a good place. We don't need to be here. As though the world is gonna end tomorrow, we don't get a city manager today or two tomorrow. We're in good hands, um we, we have time, I've confirmed that. With, with, with a number of individuals. So that being said, I'm, I'm not available.
No, I heard that.
Well, we said not available, the fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Okay, so are we saying Monday, the twentieth?
Thirteen.
Am I right?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good, seventeen.
Monday, the, Monday, I mean, maybe.
Six, I think you say you aren't available next. I, I thought, today's the sixth, are you available on the thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But I think Commissioner Campbell said you got you.
Uh so we, you said, I was going on it, what she said is.
So the thirteenth?
I'm not available on the thirteenth.
Listen, that's, is it, I mean, you can either make or you can, seventeen.
You can make, we can make it on one of those days, don't do that.
And the next stop, the next week, please, can we do it on the twentieth? Twenty, everybody? Yeah, five P M.
After five, that Jones, you want five thirty?
Yes, that, that was.
Five thirty, thank you. So the twentieth at five thirty. Is that acceptable to everyone? Yeah, that's great, thank you. Okay, I think we're all set and ready then, given that. Okay, yes, please go on, go ahead.
So, um on that, as a general item, like Commissioner Warren was mentioning, he know, and he taught people. And he knows, you know, exit strategies or whatever.
Couldn't we?
No, 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 I didn't say that. Don't put that in my mind. I didn't know anything about no exit strategy, I didn't tell you. You say time. So let me be clear, give one more. I asked, in what is meeting, one of the things on the agenda would be clear. So everybody would know. Uh what time Frank, kind of like within the day or a week that. City manager will be, and the city attorney will be leaving us. Uh secondly. The numbers, or when we get the numbers in back, um that, how much is the headhunter gonna talk to for, all three of you? That's the question, we waited, what comes here, what, what?
That's fine, do you read this, please?
So it, it, it averages the required responses to the R F A, and uh the evaluation part of the R F A would not just limit to price, uh but it is probably maybe four thousand dollars. There are additional expenses uh that are disclosed in each of the proposals for advertising as well, and that is per, per.
So I will repay you.
I will do a big, um city deployment, but I'm under contract with the city on April, when?
April.
Twenty eight, twenty, twenty three.
My end date is eight thirty-one, under my contract, I think I've got about four weeks to the occasion, I'll have to get Ms. Virginia squared away on that, or, or uh make sure from H R, and that will be my end date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
You don't.
Okay.
I, I think what's critical for right now, we're in a really crunch for a finance manager, we get ready to move into budgeting season, and what are all these, so um I think it's critical for us to move real quickly to get a finance director that knows what they're doing, to have our city could move forward. That's, that should be powerful.
Ms. Thomas?
Um I just know that you're planning to do a funding new candidate this week for a finance director, pretending as CPA, then a finance director presently, and so we're going to move forward with that.
Thank you.
Give the background.
Well, we, we don't have to, if you'd rather us not do any background, we won't. I mean, if you'd rather do the background, I'll do it.
My man, let's get the background done, and all, all we have to do is in this, make sure we do a fair background.
Mr. Gage, you're, you're, Ms. Wu, um, did you have background that um investigations on E with criminal candidates um for um education, criminal, state, federal, criminal, military, and all this and that, that was, um.
Remember those, that kind of background that, that the decision today, was it a criminal, was it a criminal act?
So, and, and you, and the commission can make a decision and say you don't want any prior employers consulting. If you say that, then we won't make any, matter of fact, I won't make any.
Please say specific name and always rest of the commission.
Yeah, please.
Please. Because I don't.
I stand on it.
Y'all by the turn.
I think we want to, I think we're talking just right now, please.
So I can drive myself home and solve enough problems, please.
Okay, with all that said, we will have a workshop, a little discussion, specifically in the future, we have a motion to adjourn.
More.
Thank you.